Good evening, everyone. Welcome. To get used to sitting here again.
We're back.
We're back. Yeah, it's okay Sammy. Brady, hello. All right, so welcome back, everyone. Here we are. I hope you found some rejuvenation over the summer. I know the staff probably appreciated the opportunities to get some catch-up done without the weekly grind of agenda prep. So as we come to order for tonight's meeting, before we welcome Fred Joyner up here to recite a poem for us, as usual, I wanted to just start with a couple of quick announcements. First, council member Nowell sends his regrets for not being able to join us tonight. He had a longstanding commitment on his calendar, but I know he's looking forward to getting back to us next week. Second, and just wanted to quickly follow up on our council retreat a few weeks ago, we had a couple of follow-up tasks from that meeting. One of those was to pull together a planning team for our next council retreat, and so I know that Randy, Barbara, and Danny are already working with the town manager on that. So thanks to the three of you and Richard for your work to do that. And second, the other task was to begin drafting a council procedural procedure manual of sorts, something we've talked about for a little while. And both Eliezar and Randy have told me that they're interested in working with me on that, so we, I think we can probably produce a draft of something pretty quickly to share with council members to review. In the meantime, since we're kicking off our fall session of meetings here, I thought it would be a good opportunity to review the council's discussion guidelines, which many of you may have seen on the bulletin board behind the podium there. It's something that's been posted there for actually a long time, several years, but we rarely refer to it. But they're pretty straightforward guidelines, useful reminders that I wanted to take off our fall season by just reading through quickly. And the first one is to share all relevant information, be open, honest, and factual. Second is to be humble, reserve the right to change your mind. Third, be an active listener, show openness to the perspectives of others. Fourth, be engaging, avoid comments that are polarizing. Fifth, avoid fence-building and dismissive words and phrases. And finally, but just as important, try to find common interests. Don't get stuck in inflexible positions or personal conflicts. So a good way to start off our new session of meeting, season of meetings. And with that, I'm very happy that we get to start having these meetings again, in large part because it means we get to welcome Fred Joyner, our poet laureate, back to the podium. Welcome Fred.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Hey Fred. We love Fred.
It is good to be here. I, yeah, it's, it's, it's good to have time off, but it's good to be back. I'm gonna read a poem by, this is a poet, Henry Dumas. If you don't know his work, he was discovered by our, you know, one of our laureates of, one of the voices of America, Toni Morrison, while she was working as an editor back in the day, before she became the, the great novelist and writer that she, thinker that she was. He's an interesting guy because in 1968, well, he's an interesting guy because he produced beautiful work, and a lot of it in such a short time. He was killed in 1968 at the age of thirty-three by a transit police officer in, 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 in New York, New York City. But Toni Morrison, while she was alive, and another poet named Eugene B. Redman kept his work alive. And this is a beautiful poem that, that kind of calls us, I, I think it's appropriate as we're reopening our, our season of, of engagement and, and the work that you all do, that we all do together. So this is Henry Dumas, this is a book called Knees of a Natural Man, and the poem is called Mississippi Song. "I was mist in the caverns of your mind. I was without shape, without sound, without color, without depth, without voice. And then I heard distant voices moaning in the night, and I felt my people calling me, heated. I expanded, I broke your skull bone. And I found your face looking at me, dark lines waiting for light, for the light. Come, my people, we have work to do. All the days of my capture I have dreamed of seeing you. Come, we will put the bones together. We will stand in the sun and make a sound with uplifted voices. We will put the sun, we will let the sun splatter a thousand colors over our skins. We will reach down into the souls and bring up the son of man. We will call the world by our name. We will give the world our voice. We will sing. And when we sing, they will hear us, and they will remember the days of calling out, the days of groaning, and they will sing with us. And then I will say, I was mist, now I am water." That's Henry Dumas. This is a, it's a beautiful book. They have this, they have this book over at Epilogue and at Flyleaf, and from what I hear, we're about to get Golden Fig books at the car mill too, so I'm sure they'll have it there. Go, go and pick this book up. It's a beautiful book of poems, and, and there's so much in it. Thank you, and, and welcome back.
Thanks Fred. See you next week.
Be here.
All right. Bye Fred. Right, next on our agenda is announcement of upcoming meetings. Mr. Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Back.
Had a few meetings here. I wanted to announce a few of them were canceled this week. The Arts Committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow has been canceled. But we have the Economic Sustainability Commission meeting September fourteenth at six PM. The Climate Action Team, September fifteenth at seven thirty. And the Planning Board meeting for September fifteenth has been canceled. And then we have the Transportation Advisory Board, September fifteenth at seven thirty PM at Town Hall.
Thanks Wesley. Any other updates from council members on upcoming town meetings? Sammy?
Just Wesley, on the website, the calendar for, shows the Climate Action Team at seven and seven thirty. If you could just take a look at that, we'll check. Thanks.
Thanks Sammy. I'll just note Wesley that tomorrow morning is the monthly meeting of the Durham Chapel Hill Carboro MPO Board at, and meeting for the first time in person since March of 2020 at Durham City Hall at nine AM tomorrow morning. All right. Seeing no others, we'll move on to our public comment period. We have a few people signed up, and I think those of you who have spoken to us before know that we ask each speaker to keep their comments to within about three minutes, just as a courtesy to the rest of the speakers. And we're gonna start with, happy to welcome Bruce Runberg and former council member Jim Merritt. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, and good evening, Council. I'm Jim Merritt, one of the co-chairs for the Orange County Veterans Memorial. Our organization recently completed Phase Two of our projected four-part project. I come before you tonight to request $10,000 to complete Phase Three. It has been estimated to cost $75,000, and we appreciate the support that you have given us in the past to honor the more than 6,000 veterans that live in Orange County. Bruce Runberg will give you the details of Phase Three.
Phase Three will include a new kiosk, a per, a permanent kiosk at the entry to the site. It will also include some electrical power to the entire site, and the design is complete, and we have raised $35,000. So we've asked the towns and the county for a few thousand more from each entity based on size. And again, we thank you for your earlier presentation of the funding to us. And if you haven't been out at the Homestead Stipe, it's at the top of the hill as you go by on your left, the Senior Center. And with Phase Two that was completed, and that's the permanent flagpole, a lot of stonework and brickwork, and it really looks wonderful. So we hope you will come by and take a peek at it. Thank you. Are there any questions you all might have?
I really appreciate you both coming to talk to us about this request, and also want to appreciate you for the letter that you sent to me summarizing the request as well, and also acknowledge Barbara for helping me dredge up that letter, which seemed to have been lost in my pile of mail. But we do have the letter now, and it's on my list to discuss with the town manager in our weekly meeting this week. And we'll certainly be getting back to you about how we want to move forward.
Okay.
And we've been happy to participate in the past, and it's a-
Just yesterday, we heard from Hillsborough, and they're going to donate additional money.
That's, that's great news.
It is.
So Mr. Manager, this is on my list for us later this week when we meet to talk about upcoming issues, and so we'll, we'll be in touch soon.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Thanks you both.
Thank you.
See you.
All right, next on the signup sheet I have Bonner Saylor. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Bonner Saylor. I am speaking tonight as a Carboro Elementary parent, and the Carboro Elementary PTA president, and on behalf of the Carboro Elementary community. I'm here tonight to request information on the status of our shared school-community playground approval, and to request the reasoning as to why it seems to be taking so long to approve. The Carboro Elementary playground has been unsafe for children for quite some time. The Carboro Elementary administrative staff have already gone through the design and contracting, NCHCCS district approval processes to make the much-needed updates. As a shared space with the town of Carboro, construction cannot begin until approval has been granted by the town. Attempts have been made several times to get updates as to any information, but one has not been received since June of this year. With school now back in session and children using what parts of the playground are safe every day, the need for approval seems more pressing. The Carboro Elementary community understands that the approval process takes time, and that the town has concerns that our whole community space, like the 203 South Greensboro project. While this project will certainly serve the entire Carboro community, the hundreds of Carboro Elementary families, as well as those community members who are not Carboro Elementary families who make use of the shared playground space, continue to hope for at a minimum an estimated timeline of when our playground may once again be safe and completely usable for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Bonner. Just, thanks for being here. Go ahead. We did receive an email also from Cassie Ford this morning, Bonner, asking for this information as well, so I appreciate you backing that, backing Cassie up on that. And so we forwarded this information to the manager this morning, and Mr. Manager, you received that email, and hopefully can get back to Ms. Ford and Ms. Saylor about an update. Do you have anything to share today, or is that something you need some time to?
Yeah, a little time to look into.
Anytime.
I mean, can you, can you ask a question, or we can't really, because I, I just want to know what part of the playground are we talking about at Carboro Elementary? I think that's not, that's less clear.
Yeah, I just don't know the answer to that. It sounds like Richard needs to dig into this a little bit.
Have you looked into it?
Sammy?
Richard, I presume this might be related to the fact that we've been down on inspectors, perhaps? Do you know if that's part of it? You don't, you don't know? So in, in the response, could you include a timeline for when it might happen? Because it sounds like a very clear request on, on the part- Cause it sounds like a very clear request on, on the part of. Thank you.
Thanks Sammy.
And I'm, I'm sure this is going to happen, but if you can include the, the council on that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And thanks again, Bonner. The manager will be in touch uh with uh timeline and update on what's going on. Okay, uh, next on the list is Andrew Dykers. Mr. Dykers, welcome.
I'm T. Andrew Dykers and I live at one oh four Williams Street, directly across from the entrance to Wilson Park. Almost two years ago, I came before this council seeking support to reclassify my home from a single-family dwelling to a duplex. My request involves zero construction and the only visible change to the property Will be the addition of a mailbox and the letters A and B. Duplexes are common in our neighborhood and despite the restrictions placed on me, I currently live in the front and rent out the back, which is a small but private space with maple floors, pine tongue and groove walls, quartz countertops, tall ceilings, small screen porch, full-size washer dryer and a deck. So far I've had three long-term tenants. The first was working to help gay and transgender immigrants at the southern border and I reduced the rent to help support that work. The second was a U N C medical student and the current tenant is a working student with family roots in Carboro. As you know, the town needs affordable rental options. The current rent for the apartment I offer is ten fifty per month, which includes power, water and Wi-Fi. I roughly value those utilities at a hundred and fifty, which leaves the cost of rent at nine hundred For an awesome one-bedroom apartment in a great location. Using the town's definition of affordable, the apartment is within the price range of anyone earning thirty-six thousand or more, Which is roughly half the area's median income. I cannot do any better than this and still be fair to myself. So far, I have not raised the rents and the demand has been quite strong. I am doing the very thing the town says it needs by providing high-quality affordable housing And yet I am dismissed or obstructed at every turn. Almost two years ago, I was told this was an interesting issue that needed to be studied, But the town has still not given any explanation for how its restrictions are helping the community. Nor has the town been able to say how many properties are impacted by its current policy of using arbitrary lot-size categories To effectively determine who has the right to earn rental income and who doesn't. I think one reason the town has not given an answer regarding This important, I, I'm sorry. I think one reason the town has not given an answer regarding the number of properties impacted By its residential density policy is because to answer that important question, Every property must be categorized according to the rules set forth in the ordinance. This type of record-keeping hasn't If this type of record-keeping hasn't been done from the beginning or facilitated through some software function, Which is not available on the public websites, then it becomes a tedious task of looking up every property and notating its size To see in which part of the Carboro class system it falls. In other words, the town has created these classifications and restrictions, But does not know or is not willing to disclose its actual impact. I use the town and county websites to look up every lot in the R ten district. While I'm confident about these numbers, I'm also asking for a reasonable margin of error. I counted eight hundred and fifty-three total lots and found two hundred and thirty roughly between a quarter and a third of an acre. These properties like mine are not allowed to build any additional dwellings. Given the town's stated goals and objectives, it makes no sense for lot size to trump location when determining permissible uses. The town is abusing its power through the overly rigid enforcement of an arbitrary And at best outdated, if not irrational residential density policy. And to make matters worse, the town is also suppressing its citizens' ability to seek redress to the Board of Adjustment in matters such as these. Thank you for listening. I'm happy to answer any questions or further discuss the details of my findings and I hope this helps.
Thank you, Mr. Dykers. It's helpful to hear um your statement. Go ahead. Um, Mr. Manager, I think we've had some correspondence uh between, where we've seen some correspondence between yourself and Mr. Dykers and the attorneys. And you know, I feel like those questions have been addressed as far as they can be at this point in where we are. Do you, is there any more information you can share at this time?
Only that it's scheduled to go before the Board of Adjustment on September twenty-first. Our attorney may want to offer more, but that's all I can offer this evening.
I think if I recall correctly, one of the issues in terms of our ability to really dig into this particular issue Is that it is subject to a proceeding before the Board of Adjustment and also has been subject to litigation with the town. And so I think rather wisely, we have been advised to sort of let that process play out. Thank you. Mr. Sammy, we're not going to engage in a dialogue, but I do appreciate you coming to speak.
Um, I'll just uh, Mr. Dyker, if, if you don't mind sharing your, your research, Um, as we have completed the comprehensive plan, there is an intention to really look at these questions. And I think um, you know, citizen research could help us in, inform how we go about it. It's intriguing what you've found, eight hundred and fifty-three and two hundred and thirty of them are under a quarter of an acre.
Okay. So we're gonna, let's let the process go through where it's supposed to go. And I, I agree that the policy issues are really, yeah. And I'd be happy to receive the information that you've shared up here tonight. That'd be great to see.
Thank you.
We do need to move on with the agenda. Okay, next up on the list is Shelley Welch. Shelley, here you are. Welcome. Thanks Shelley.
My name is Shelley Welch. I am owner of the Wildflower School in Chapel Hill under Carboro jurisdiction. And tonight I'm going to talk about the legal basis for rejecting expansion of non-conforming situations in Carboro. As most of you know, we are next to Merritt's gravel pit. Section fifteen one twenty-four of Carboro's L U O addresses extension or enlargement of non-conforming situations. Attached here is a copy of that section. Draw your attention specifically to fifteen dash one twenty-four D, Which states in part that quote, "The volume, intensity and frequency of use Where a non-conforming situation exists may be increased And the equipment or processes used at a location where a non-conforming situation exists may be changed If these or similar changes amount only to changes in degree of activity rather than changes in kind." I have included Kirkpatrick V. Village Council, a North Carolina appellate court case for you to reference after this meeting As you reflect on the purpose and intention of the non-conforming situations in this town. The Carboro L U O aligns with North Carolina public policy regarding non-conforming situations. Quote, "Non-conforming uses and structures are not favored under the public policy of North Carolina And zoning ordinances are construed against indefinite continuation of non-conforming use, Clegg V. Durham." Our courts have consistently ruled that the purpose of the non-conforming situations Is to allow for rezoning, but also ensure fairness. Rezoning typically happens because a municipality has a vision for the future, for future development That is inconsistent with current zoning. To be fair to those businesses that will be deemed non-conforming after a rezoning, Towns allow a grace period of sorts for a business to complete its current use. While the Carboro L U O is consistent with North Carolina policy, Carboro's decisions have been completely inconsistent with both public policy and its L U O. While preparing for, uh, preparing this document for the meeting tonight, I received, of course, a late-night email from Martin Root partially addressing a question I may ask him Four months ago in May. He failed to address the two questions that I asked, But the issue he did address indicates an apparent misreading of the L U O. Some parts of the L U O are up for interpretation, But some interpretations go too far and stray from the original intention of the L U O. Those overreaching interpretations lead to litigation. It is a waste of Carboro taxpayer money to engage in overreach As Carboro did with your lawsuit against Bethany and James Slack, which you lost on appeal. It is equally wasteful for the council to draft an L U O and then fail to enforce it. I am here to tell you tonight, if Carboro allows the expansion of Merritt Gravel Pit on Wildflower property Or allows the expansion of Merritt Gravel Pit activity into rock-crushing Or any other non-conforming situation or use, I will litigate against you. North Ca- if North Carolina case law holds steady, I will win. The law is on Wildflower's side in this. In fact, the law is on the side of every citizen on Damascus Church Road or Smith Level Road.
Thank you Shelley. Do you have a copy you can share with the clerk? Thank you. Alright, next on the list is Kevin. Come on up Kevin, welcome.
Thank you Council. As Shelley just mentioned, my name is Kevin Poynbuff with Wildflower and Shelley Welch. As Shelley had just stated in reference to section fifteen one twenty-four D, The volume, intensity or frequency of use of property where a non-conforming situation exists May be increased and the equipment or processes used At a location where a non-conforming situation exists may be changed If these or similar changes amount to only changes in the degree of activity Rather than the changes in the kind and no violations of other paragraphs in this section occur. To be specific, rock-crushing is not an increase in the volume of sand mining. Rock-crushing is not an increase in the intensity of sand mining. Rock-crushing is not an increase of the frequency of sand mining. Rock-crushing is a change in the kind Of activity taking place at Merritt Gravel Pit. Whether or not Merritt Gravel Pit has begun rock-crushing or not, that is not the issue. Merritt Gravel Pit has been granted an air quality permit for the express purpose of rock-crushing. Therefore, Carboro Town Council needs to address this issue internally And be prepared by learning the land use ordinance And understanding how the North Carolina courts address this issue. Carboro can make any decision it wants to and it can make that. And the courts can overturn Carboro's decision and waste taxpayer money, just like they did in the Slacks case And keep money from the Orange County Veterans Memorial. Thank you.
Thanks Kevin. What? You need the information from the manager?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Manager, is, is it possible for you to send me like a summary of what this situation is about? I don't quite understand it and I feel like that's been coming up before board a couple of times. So is it possible for you to send me kind of like info on that? Aside from the threats for lawsuits, but what's going on?
Yes, we have a brief summary we'll send to council. Yes, we'll send it.
Thanks Shelley Azar. Thank you Richard. Sammy?
And uh, I would, I would like similarly information from the attorney in terms of uh non-conforming uses And this point made about differences and changes of kind versus frequency And what qualifies as a violation of what is allowed by state law. Thank you.
Thanks Sammy. Everyone we have signed up today. I'll see any other folks here in the public, I don't think. So we'll move on to the next agenda item. Is the consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Hey, thank you Mayor. The first item on the consent agenda Is Quilla Report twenty twenty-two, second quarter for the town of Carboro C D B G dash C V Grant Number twenty-v dash thirty-five twenty-five. First agenda item is for the town council to receive the second quarter report. Please not. For the calendar year twenty twenty-two, uh, for the town of Carboro's Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Award From the North Carolina Department of Commerce. The second item is approval of contracts. The purpose of this item is to approve a speed table and a solid waste disposal contract for the town of Carboro. And the next item is the appointment of Economic Sustainability Commission Member to the Racial Equity Commission. Purpose of this item is to, is for the council to formally appoint a representative from this Economic Sustainability Commission, E S C, To serve as a voting liaison member of the Racial Equity Commission.
Alright, thank you Richard. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I moved.
Or is somebody wanting, are you wanting to pull something? Which one, item do you want to?
Item two, I have a question.
Okay, is there a motion to approve items one and three on the consent agenda?
Second.
Azar moved, seconded by Sammy that we approve items one and three. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Randy, you have a question on item two?
Yeah, um, Mr. Manager, I had a question about the Oak Avenue um speed table. And I wanted to be sure, I, because uh, a resident of Oak Avenue Had asked me whether or not this is a replacement of one that was, when they were, when they were redoing Oak Avenue. Is this a replacement or is this an additional? Can we get some clarification on that?
This is my understanding is a replacement, the one that's, there was a temporary um speed table and this would replace it with a permanent one.
Okay, but they're in the exact same location.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll move item two.
I'll second that with gratitude to the manager for answering my questions beforehand. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Moved by Randy, seconded by Sammy that we approve item number two on the consent agenda. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Thanks Richard. We'll move on to other matters.
The first item on the other matters is a classification and compensation study report. The purpose of this item is to have the Management Advisory Group International, known as MAG, Present the findings of a position's classification and compensation study And for the town council to approve implementation of the findings. Now introduce Julie Eckenroth, our Human Resources Director, to introduce this item.
Hey Julie. Welcome.
Hola. Mayor and Council, good evening. Um, we are um pleased to have a representative from MAG join us tonight. They have been with us on this journey for the past four months. Um, that included a lot of input from our employees. In fact, every employee, almost every employee was able to give input on, um, into this study. And so um, we are happy to be supporting one of the strategies found in the comprehensive plan That is under the Public Services Chapter. And doing these types of studies regularly to ensure that we're a competitive employer. And so with that, I would like to introduce Steve Foster and he is a consultant with Management Advisory Group.
Thanks Julie. Welcome, Mr. Foster.
Thank you Julie. Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Just want to um present the findings of our compensation classification study. And um, I also want to thank all of the employees that participated. Like Julie said, we had overwhelming, overwhelming response from the employees of the town here. I've, I've done lots of these studies in the past and it's one of the highest participation rates I've seen. And that, that comes from a lot of involvement with human resources and making sure that people know how important their participation was. So thank you to the employees and also thank you to the Human Resources Department for all of their hard work. Just like to give you a little bit of the background on how this study worked. Basically, we performed a compensation classification study. And we've covered all the town positions that were within the scope of the study. That was um, a total of one hundred and sixty-three positions and ninety-one job titles. What we did is we compared the compensation from Carboro to the relevant market. And believe me, you'll, you'll see when I show you the list of municipalities, I'm sure you guys know this living here. There are a lot, there's a lot of competition surrounding Carboro. So we found that out during the course of our market study. So what we want to do is we want to ensure that the positions performing similar work at the same level Are, are getting the same type of classification. That, that allows us to um come up with equal compensation and things to that effect. And also I want to let you know that we've recommended some policy changes That are going to help with supporting the findings that we've made over the course of this study. Like I said earlier, we heavily relied on the participation of the employees in this study. We have an online questionnaire that asks for a lot of details for each of the jobs, and it really helps when we get more than one for each job title. It gives us a little bit more perspective, plus we get the perspective from the supervisors involved also. So it was very comprehensive, and it was a key part of this study. By getting these questionnaires and going out and doing our market survey, it also allowed us to identify jobs where there's concerns with retention or recruiting issues. We were also able to conduct interviews with management, top management, and they expressed those concerns when it came to retainability and recruiting issues. So that was, that was a big focus of the study. So what we also did, I mentioned the market survey, we gathered salary information from the surrounding area, various municipalities, various counties, anybody that would be either a competitor or a peer of the Town of Carrboro. We also did a thorough review of the responses that we got from the employees on those questionnaires, and we made, we recommended changes that will support a competitive compensation system and will also help us develop an implementation and transition cost for this particular study. This here is just an overall picture of how the study went, just got to give you some of the key steps. And we'd just like to show this to the town councils, so they can get an idea of how the study kind of flowed, and also how we were able to balance internal equity and external equity. What I mean by internal equity is whenever we have a comparison of jobs within the town, we look in, into the town before we look outside the town. So we're making sure that all of the jobs that are within the course of the study, we want to make sure that any jobs that have similar responsibilities or similar functions receive equal compensation. So that's what we call internal equity. Once we get that established, we go outside of the town, and that's when we start looking at the market, and we compare Carrboro to other surrounding areas to see if that equity holds up against the external equity of other organizations. We were able to develop some salary schedules based on calculations using our copyrighted equipment. I'll be showing, I'll be sharing some of those calculations and the recommendations we had from that software later on in this presentation. This is a list of the municipalities that we used, lots of municipalities and counties, and Owassee was also included. And like I said earlier, that's, that's a lot. I mean, when you consider the size of this area, that's a lot of competition. If I go, if we go somewhere like out west, like New Mexico or West Texas or somewhere like that, I could see nearly this many markets in such close proximity. So it really is a competitive area. Okay, this is where I want to get into some of the numbers I mentioned earlier that we were able to calculate with our software. We did find that the town has a overall lag in market. We broke this down by minimum, midpoint, and maximum ranges. At the minimum, we're talking 7.53%. At the midpoint, roughly 10%, and at the maximum, 12%. There are certain jobs, I listed four of them here, that were actually a little bit higher than that because those numbers above are just the overall average. I wanted to make sure that we targeted these four jobs in particular because they were a little bit higher as far as needing to be adjusted. We have solid waste equipment operator one, we have permit technician, we have code enforcement officer one, and also, I kind of listed them all together here at the bottom, but most of the director positions are in need of adjustment also. What we ended up doing is we created a unified plan for the town, and that includes all 91 of the job titles who were in the study under one plan. We used open ranges, which is a very common practice nowadays, and the open ranges contain a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum. We broke that down into 30 grade levels, so every one of the jobs within the study are placed within one of these particular pay grades in that 30 pay grade level. And range widths, that's just, that's what we do when we calculate the percentage from the beginning of the pay range to the end of the pay range. So we use 55%, which is a very common practice, especially when we looked at other organizations within the market study. So we wanted to make sure that we were comparing apples to apples in that effect. Okay, in terms of annualized costs in implementing this plan, we came up with three adjustments. The first is a 2% across the board, and that affects all 163 people that were part of this study. Once we establish that 2% across the board, then we want to take everybody that's below the minimum of the new pay grades and bring them up to minimum. That involves 42 employees, and the cost of that is just over $114,000 as an annual cost. And then last but not least, we like to include an employee equity adjustment. And what that is, that's taken into account people's experience based on their promotion dates. We're trying to avoid, the term we use is compression or decompression. We want to make sure that people that are just starting out aren't already pressing up against people that have already been with the organization for a while. So the employee equitable adjusted, equity adjustment affects 59 employees for $151,000, and that just helps us alleviate those kind of issues. So the overall cost of the implementation is $455,370, which is a 4.79% increase in the current payroll. So I will say that you guys are in pretty good shape as far as the adjustments go. We've had some organizations that haven't had these studies done in years, and by the time we get down to the implementation point, the adjustment costs are way higher. So you guys are in an ideal position to implement a study like this at a fairly modest cost based on, based on the timing of this study. We also included recommendations on compensation policy, and some of those are what to do in cases of reclassifications, promotions, lateral transfers, demotions. Temporary assignments, that's where somebody has to fill in kind of on the spot for a temporary amount of time. How we would handle compensation for somebody doing something like that. We also wanted to cover hiring guidelines, and the last thing we wanted to cover in these policies is addressing employees that max out. And by maxing out, I mean an employee that is at the very top of their pay range. So we have to come up with ways to address that. And those policies are, like I said, at the bottom here, they're basically the best practices of the human resources field, and they're included in our report. Aside from the study I've been mentioning, we also did a little bit of a study on the side for the positions of town manager and town clerk. And on those, they're appointed positions, that's why they were not included in the original study. But we prepared a separate memo with our recommendations for your consideration.
Counsel members, sorry to interrupt, but just so council members are clear on what we're doing in terms of process here, the separate memo here prepared with regard to the manager and clerk positions is something that we'll discuss in closed session as an informational item only tonight, at the end of our meeting.
All right, perfect. I was going to ask about that.
That will be considered separate from what we're hearing about here.
Yes, sir. So in closing with our study, we feel like we've come up with a fair and equitable internal relationship for all the positions, which is what I mentioned earlier, where we're trying to make sure that anything that is similar in duties, regardless of the job title, if they're similar in duties or responsibilities, we want to make sure that the compensation is fair and equitable. We also think with this new implementation, you guys are going to be competitive when it comes to starting salaries. And that's, like I said, it's very important when you're in such a high, highly competitive area as you are here in Carrboro. So just once again to reiterate, we're looking at a total cost of $455,370 with an increase in total payroll of 4.79%. So, and again, we consider that a pretty moderate implementation in our, in our experience. So, yeah, well, a little bit quicker than I thought, so I'd be glad to answer any questions you all have.
Okay, so we'll start with Sammy and then go to Elliot Azar and then Susan.
Thank you for your presentation. So, so increasing or doing the minimum at 7.5 and bringing that up is good for when we're going to hire people, right? Because they start off at what is market rate. However, you're describing mid being at 10% below and max at 12, am I understanding correct?
Well, that was your original, that was your original pay scale. We've, we've corrected that with.
Oh, that's going to be corrected.
Yes, sir. I should have made that clear. Those percentages I showed you, that's where you were at heading into the study.
Okay.
So we made those corrections and brought you up to speed on all three of those categories.
Okay, great.
We were just trying to show you where you were at when we started, so you could see that we've come up with a solution.
Thank you. And, and so that's captured in what the added cost is, and that is actually where we become competitive in terms of
Right.
What happens a lot is we lose great employees to neighboring jurisdictions.
And we worry about that because especially this many competitors, I mean, we don't want somebody else using you all as a training ground. Letting you guys do all the training, and with everybody being in such close proximity, it's real easy to dangle a carrot and say, hey, come on over here, and now that you're trained.
What is the effect of larger municipalities that have kind of in the same department, more staff, and by consequence, I can imagine less of a burden on an individual employee in terms of smaller municipalities, kind of jack-of-all-trades, a lot more that is done by a single employee. How is that registered? Because I can imagine for an employee to go to a bigger organization, understanding that while they may get the same salary, they may not have to do as much because the work is, is on a bigger ship, so to say.
Right, and we use our questionnaires to try to get that information. That will definitely flush out if there's somebody that's a jack-of-all-trades, if they're doing additional duties and things like that, that's going to pander our attention during the course of the questionnaire process.
And the adjustment will reflect.
That's correct.
Great. One last thing, you mentioned in the report that you'll freeze the salary until market data supports an increase, and yet every year there's inflation. And so are you saying that your recommendation is that we, that progressive governments coordinate with your organization to adjust that annually? Is that as an alternative to an, just an Afika automatic percentage increase on all our salaries across?
I mean, a cost of living adjustment would definitely be something you could look into. I mean, we tried to make these pay ranges wide enough where if you wanted to adjust somebody's salary within the pay range, plus the software that we're leaving with Human Resources, it's called Classification Manager, they'll be able to operate that and still make changes after we're gone. So that's one of the beauties of our firm, without bragging too much, is we like the fact that we have this custom software that allows us to not only do a study, but to leave our, our clients with something they can use after we're gone.
To fully understand that, you're saying the software will help us increase salaries annually to keep up with inflation?
Right, and like I said, just keeping cost of living.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, Sammy. Elliot Azar, and then Susan.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, just a couple of questions. First is, what metric do you use to determine competition, right? Because I, like, when I was looking at that list, there's some folks, you know, I might have misread that, but I think Statesville was on the list.
Right, now.
So my question is like, are you looking at distance? Are you looking at driving time? What are you looking at as far as?
It's a combination of both. We call them targets just for short, but the targets fall into two categories. They're either a competitor, which means they're within driving distance, and somebody could just instantly change jobs, or we have peers, which is going to be somewhere else across the state that's similar in size, and we're just trying to use their organization setup to compare to you and see how you compare. So that's, that's, that's the two categories we use for targets, is peers and competitors. And the bulk of them on that list were competitors because they're all in such close proximity.
Gotcha. And when you're looking, not kind of switching over, switching over to a different question, when I'm looking at the recommendation of a flat increase across the board, when you were building or creating that recommendation, how did you take into effect the two raises that have already been made for folks in Carrboro? Is that something that was considered or in, just in the last year, not even a year?
Which, which she raises, are you referring to something?
Like salary adjustments that were made earlier this year for, I believe it was, unfortunately, there was a flat, also another kind of like flat increase across the board. Was that taken into consideration when you were doing the study? How was that included in your, in your conclusion?
Was that included? I just want to make sure we're on the same page here.
Yeah, like it was in the police department, but I believe it was also like a flat increase across the board prior to us going on break.
Yeah, so we did a market adjustment in January for police, and then in July, with the passing of the budget, all employees received a $3,000. When that change happened, we sent new data to MAG, and so they used our most current salaries to determine how we compared to the market. So they were most certainly considered.
Gotcha, that was my question.
I just wanted to make sure that was the case. That's usually the answer, but I wanted confirmation.
Yeah, no, that was my question.
So another way to say that, those percentages, you saw the deficit, where we were behind, the 7%, those numbers would have been a lot higher had we not made those investments in the budget and with the police department. That would have been, we've been farther behind had we not done those increases.
Gotcha. And then when I was looking at the, and this is part of the reason that Mr. Manager sent you the email about possibly having a work session around this, because I'm, I'm, I'm not the best when it comes to numbers. So when I was looking at the, at the table, I believe there were some that we were either above the, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but I was, we were either above or right on par with the market value.
I should do the.
When I'm looking at, I'm looking at page, the original. Page 53 of the packet, right? Yeah, just looking at the survey results. I have one, two, three, four, five positions where we are either right on par or above what the minimum or, or the market value assessment, sorry, I'm using the wrong words. I'm just, again, I have only had this weekend to look at this. I'm trying to understand this well before I make an informed decision as to how I'm going to support this or not. Was that, just, and that was just me looking over this quickly.
Right, everything you're seeing here was incorporated into our calculations. What you're seeing here for these numbers is the overall total. So there's going to be some that are either at or slightly above, but the majority of them were not, and that's what made these lagging numbers.
So for example, they're not, not all positions are being increased seven and a half percent. When you look at the new pay, the new proposed pay grades, certain job titles are grouped together in certain pay grades, and some of our job titles may have gone up a pay grade because we realized they were severely lagging in their salary. Some may have remained in a similar pay grade or may have even gone down a pay grade. And so the differences in these percentages that you're seeing here are reflected in the, the groups of jobs that are banded together in the different pay grades.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay, cool. So I'm just going to pause on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elliot Azar. Thanks for the responses. Next up is Susan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for those questions, Sammy and Elliot Azar. Yes, I have a few questions, and if it's okay, I actually may do a little bit of bouncing around in terms of who is going to be best to answer them. But before I begin, I just wanted to, in terms of transparency, mention that I'm the director of a nonprofit called Orange County Living Wage that certifies employers in the community who pay part-time, full-time employees a living wage. So a few questions. Let's begin with benefits. I know that this seems to focus just on salaries. And were benefits also included in this study, or is that all entirely separate?
That's a separate issue, and that was.
So not directly included in this study. We are aware of how our benefits benchmark against most of our competitors. And in those terms, we're pretty strong. As a result of, or kind of with, with this study, but not necessarily with the consultant, we are doing an internal comprehensive benefits review, which we've actually kicked off this week with some employee listening sessions. So we understand the impact that they have in conjunction with this, but it was not part. So we understand the impact that they have in conjunction with this, but it was not part of the study.
Okay, thank you for that. Next question is, I think this is for Mr. Manager. I know that we're going to be doing a disparity study. And will that disparity study, I know we've talked about looking at how grants, loans are awarded, contracts are awarded. Will it also be looking at the hiring, promotions, retentions among staff in terms of racial disparities?
The disparity study will focus solely on procurement of the town in terms of the dollars that we spend with vendors and contractors. Doesn't deal with employees, our employees. It's all about the vendors and the contracting dollars we spend with vendors and suppliers.
For what it's worth, our department's GARE work is heavily focused on that.
That's good to know. I mention it because I appreciated this comment, Mr. Foster, about we just live in a very, very competitive area. And in order to be able to have the type of really diverse applicant pool we need to diversify our workforce. You know, I think having the higher wages, being, having competitive wages is going to be so important in diversifying those applicant pools. So, but I appreciate all the good work GARE is doing as well. Julie, you mentioned the 2% across the board adjustment. So if an employee is making $100,000 a year, that would mean that this bonus would be $2,000. And if an employee were making $30,000 a year, then that would mean that their bonus would be $600. So my question is, was there, because, because the large, the larger benefit is going to the higher, the higher income employees, was there any consideration of doing another raise that was the same amount for everybody? So just as we did a $3,000 bonus for every employee, was there consideration for doing that again as a way of providing a disproportionate benefit to the lower pay grades?
We actually kind of viewed that the opposite of how you explained it. So if you think about it, in July, our, you know, lower paid, lower paid employees that got the $3,000 may have this current fiscal year already received nearly a 10% raise. And then this will be on top of that. So that was our thinking going into the July, going into the budget season, what we, how we were going to adjust employee salary. That was part of that discussion, that the 3,000, a flat amount would benefit lower paid employees more so than the higher paid employees.
Thank you, thank you for that. So one, one other, couple of other things. The, how many part-time employees do we have? And are they, are their benefits prorated? And also how, what kinds of adjustments were made for part-timers in terms of this, this plan?
Right. So we have two groups of part-time employees. We have part-time temporary employees, which we probably consider sort of our seasonal employees. I think all of them are in recreation and parks. And so might be, right now I know we're hiring for football empires, for example. And so their pay adjustment was raised to the Orange County living wage amount on July 1st. There's no other, this study covered permanent employees. And so we have two part-time permanent employees who are consistently with us. And so yes, they are being included, just as all the other employees are for the 2%, the longevity or internal equity portion. And their benefits, as you said, they are prorated.
Okay, great. That's great to hear. And one more question. So, so the, the, the cost of the whole plan will be $435,000. And then the increase in the benefits as a result of the higher salaries will be an additional $100,000. So if we look at the carryover for the implementation of this plan, which was $660,000, it looks to me like we're actually $125,000 ahead. So perhaps this question would be for Mr. Manager. We've talked a little bit about this employee housing incentive program where there could be rental assistance for some of the staff or also it could be down payment assistance. I know that we are looking for ways to provide more opportunities for staff to be living in the same community or, or close to Carrboro. And I was curious if there's been any consideration of using that 125, or a part of that toward an employee housing incentive program similar to what they have in Chapel Hill.
As a part of the comprehensive benefit review that Julie referred to, we're including that employee assistance program as part of that conversation with employees to learn more about their interest. So once we get a better sense of the responses from employees about that program, we'll come back with counsel and share that information with you and recommendations if it looks like there's a lot of interest, what we might do to fund that program.
Great. And final comment, I just did want to say we, you know, before the summer, we approved this very ambitious, comprehensive plan. And I think maybe the most important investment we make in that plan is having a stable, productive, really dedicated staff. And I think the way, maybe the best thing we can do in terms of having a stable staff is to be providing compensation necessary so that they're not jumping, as you said, we don't want Carrboro to be the training ground where we bring in staff and, and train, and then they're jumping around to these other nearby jurisdictions where they can be paid more. So I appreciate your sharing all this information and, and hoping that we can support these higher compensation and then hit the ground running with this comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next up I have Barbara.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, what's your name again?
Steve Foster.
Thank you, Steve, for the presentation. Thank you, Julie, for your work. On this very important piece here, the classification and compensation study report, I first wanted to kind of piggyback off of what Councilmember Posada was asking about the police department, the initial market adjustment, and then the money that came again in July of 2022. And then the implementation plan does include another 2% across the board. And then you have 42 employee adjustments to their new pay grade minimum and 59 employee adjustments related to internal equity and longevity. So I bring up the police department because we're also currently, we currently have the Community Safety Task Force that is, is doing work around reimagining community and public safety. Now, in that, in that resolution, police budget as well as budget reallocation was a thing. And so I asked the question because I want to make sure that nothing that we may decide through the implementation of this plan could preclude recommendations that may come from them as a result of their work. So what I see here for the police department, I see one, two, I see three at 2%. And potentially, I don't know if some of our police officers are in the 42 employees adjustment or the 59. Because we just have the numbers here, so we, we really don't know what, who the 42 represents or the 59.
It's not in that report, but we have the details on that. I mean...
And that doesn't have to be answered tonight. I just...
You're just asking if the implementation of this plan precludes anything?
It could preclude a recommendation from the task force because I know what was in the resolution that Sammy and Damon and, and Randy worked on. And police budget was there, budget reallocation was there. And so this, this is just about the work of the task force. It's not that I don't want our police officers to be paid and have a competitive salary. It's about looking at the whole of what's happening as it relates to what we're, we're probably getting ready to do. And the work of a task force is just getting started. And some of their work will be tied to police budget, budget reallocation. So that's just kind of my question.
I will try to respond to that. Again, this is about providing a competitive salary for existing officers and then to hire more. We're already down, I believe, eight now.
Right.
So having competitive salaries, I don't think in any way precludes the work of the Community Safety Task Force because I think that gets more into service delivery, programmatic efforts, which could have some impact on personnel. For example, they decide to do away with some part of police service, for example. Then you would have those officers in that particular area doing that work. But in terms of providing competitive salary, that doesn't in any way preclude the work of the task forces, I see it.
As you see it.
But what I'm saying is because I think if we don't provide the competitive salary, we potentially lose officers that we do have, and we're going to have trouble attracting more officers to fill the vacancies that we have.
I know that seems, I know it seems like a confusing question, but to me, it's, it's really a thing if we're going to connect all the dots and do the work we say we want to do. So, I mean, everybody seems really perplexed. I'm sorry if you're perplexed, but I, I see it very clearly. So that's, so I'm, I'm going to leave that there. So when you talk about longevity, are we talking with the town as an organization or in a current position? When you talk about longevity?
We use a promotion date. We're talking about the time that they've been in that current position. That's the promotion date referring to.
Oh, okay. And not with the town?
Right.
In service, but?
Right. It's, yeah, it's based on promotion date within that, yeah, within that job.
Okay. That's, that's helpful. And I think it was Mayor Protem Romaine that brought up about the benefits package. And so, you know, I think, you know, money is great. Money makes the world go round. You know, you need a good salary, good compensation package. And I know our town manager realizes this is one of the tools in the toolbox to retain good employees, get and retain good employees. But, you know, work culture is a thing as well as professional development. And I'm sure our town manager is on top of that. So this is, would be just like one thing in the toolbox to try to get and retain good employees. And you had a slide about reclassification, lateral transfer, and some other things up there. I wanted to ask you about that.
I'm the wrong way on that.
So I read some about it in the packet. And so for each one, the way that it moves forth is not necessarily the same, is it? Like if you're reclassifying a position and you're talking about, when you reclassify it, it's 5%. I read about it, kind of scanned over it. I was wondering if you could just kind of go through that. I don't remember what page it's on.
Yeah, so, so they...
It's under compensation policy.
Yeah, yeah. So...
I think Julie knows one.
Yeah, I do. I recall it. So there is, as he said, the best practices for how a salary should change under each of these different things. And so they may be sort of a different formula, if you will, depending on which one of these items it is. So, so for example, a reclassification could be somebody was hired with a specific job description, and they get into that position and they're actually, their duties grow over time. And so it may necessitate that they are reclassified to either, their position is reclassified to a new pay grade. And so that sample policy would help guide us on how that particular person's salary would change with that reclassification. A promotion obviously is going to a higher job, maybe higher salary or higher position. A lateral transfer would be you're staying at your same pay grade. So we have, in Public Works, we have several different divisions, solid waste and then streets and grounds. They may have, they may want to move somebody from one division to another, but they're staying at their same pay grade. And so that's a lateral transfer. So all these different types of movement that our employees may experience, this helps guide us and make sure that there is equity every time one of these things happens.
And, and thank you for that. But I was actually talking about the percentage of money that's attached to each one and how it's like phased in. It's not the same. I would assume it's, it's, I guess, different for each one.
Well, a motion is going to be, you know...
I'm talking about reclassification at the top, not necessarily.
Oh, so just that one in particular?
And even the temporary assignment.
So, yeah, you know, the best practice, if I recall it correctly, says if you are reclassified two pay grades, for the first pay grade, you would get a 5% raise, and then after that, 2.5% up to a maximum of 15. So it just, again, it kind of just gives us a guideline. So anytime that happens, regardless of the position or department that you're in, that everybody who goes through that change, their compensation is changed in a similar way.
In a similar way. Okay.
The same way, really.
So addressing employees who max out, I thought Steve said, was there a slide that addressed that you were going to talk a little bit more about that? Or you were not?
Not about the maxing out. I just, I had in my notes here, just, just what we meant by that. I mean, obviously, you know what that is. That was just some guidelines we provided for somebody that's at the top of their pay grade and they've maxed out, so.
So if the, if the maximum for a pay grade is, is $50,000 and...
That's what their salary is.
Yeah, and that's, and you've, you're an employee and you've reached that salary. Your pay will stay at the maximum until all the pay grades are readjusted as we're doing in a study like this. So if council provided a 2% COLA, but you were at the maximum of your pay grade, you would not go above your maximum.
Oh, you wouldn't get the 2% cost of living?
Right.
Because you're already maxed out.
Very top already.
And so did I hear yearly for that review, or is it every five years? Or, or does it just depend on the market itself?
Are you talking about for the...
For the adjustments.
Yeah, for the adjustment, right.
Oh, that's, that's an annual cost because it's taking your current payroll.
No, 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 no. I actually was talking about those who max out, like how long would they have to wait? What are you waiting for? Is it just the market, however it rolls?
Have to decide how that, you guys mostly will have to decide how that goes forward if we're doing an, an annual look at this, MAGRA?
Right. Most of these studies occur every three to five years.
Oh, three to five.
Yeah, but I mean, there's, there's no limit on that. I mean, if something changed drastically and you were concerned, we could do a limited study on just a certain area where we can do a broad study like we just completed.
So, yeah, so basically for employees who max out, it's, it's like they have to wait, you know, like maybe three to five, you know, or however, whenever it's decided for that to come up.
Right.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get around to. And my last, I think it's my last question. These 42 and 59 employees that you talk about here, was there any reason why you didn't really identify a little bit more? Or in groupings or...
Maybe for, for the purpose of this presentation, we just tried to give you the broad numbers. But I mean, any specifics you all want, if you want to submit those questions through HR, we can give the answers for you because we have all the details. We just...
Okay, so I would like specifics on the 42 and the 59.
Okay.
Thank you. That was my last one. Thank you.
Sure thing.
Thank you, Barbara. Before I move on, Randy, do you have any questions before I move on to, back to Eliassar?
Well, I just was going to make a comment. No, I, I haven't done my comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Eliassar, go ahead.
Yeah, just, just, just one comment that Mayor Protem brought up. It's, it's kind of like around the benefits. So just to understand it correctly, the benefits, regardless of how they match up to other of these competitors, was not taken into consideration when we're looking at this study, correct?
Correctly, no.
Right.
And I also am in line with trying to get more information on this. Again, going back to my email earlier this week, if not today, I already forgot when, when I sent, it's been a long day, y'all. And I guess this is a question for the manager or the mayor. Do we have to vote on this today or can we put, put this? Do we have to vote on this today or can we put this up for a work session to dive deeper into these details that I would, I'm very much in line of getting?
You're not required to vote on it, no, you don't have to do it tonight, whenever council's ready.
I think that, you know, if.
Does that mean?
If council members have remaining questions that we want answers to after this evening, I think it would be helpful to get those to the manager so that staff can provide some responses. I think that the original recommendation was that we would, if we do agree to implement this study, that it would be in time for an implementation date of October 8th. We have one more meeting of the council before October 8th. So ideally, we would not wait any longer than next week to make a decision.
Well, yeah, I just know that, like, I received the packet on Friday afternoon and had a busy weekend, so I didn't really have too much time to look through this. And I have some lingering questions that I can't at the moment formulate into words. So if we could, I'm definitely in line with sending those over to the manager and having some responses so that, you know, I'm more comfortable voting. It's not that I don't want to vote on this right now, it's just, well, it's not that. I'm not against salary adjustments, I'm definitely on board with that. I just want to make sure that I understand what I'm voting on prior to voting. Because if a vote was to happen right now, I would just have to abstain because I don't feel comfortable in voting on this just yet.
But we'll finish having some questions here and we'll have a little bit more conversation, Elias R., about how we want to proceed.
Perfect, thanks.
Randy, are you ready or do you want to go to Sammy next?
I just wanted to thank the manager and staff and Julie for the work that went into working with MAG on this. I know that the question about classification and compensation, it's been a long haul. And I think, I think for many staff over the years, it's been frustrating. So I think just within the last year or so, trying to level things out and reassure staff that the issue is recognized and will be authentically addressed. I'm really glad we're at this point, so I thank you so much because I know how much work getting this data from, you know, ground truthing it with staff, that's a lot of work in addition to just crunching and crunching it in lots of different ways. And I feel like staff, especially folks who've been here a really long time and got stuck, whether they were compressed or whatever, I really feel this is a way to say, we recognize the frustration that you've had, we're working on it and we're going to create a, you know, a tool that's going to work into the future. So thank you and thank you, staff.
Thanks, Randy, Sammy.
Yeah, I'm intrigued by this question that's come up from a few council members. In the past, I'd understood one of the reasons our salaries were a little lower is because our benefits were so good. And, but it sounds like you're saying our benefits are kind of middle of the road comparatively.
On par, yeah.
On par. So that provides some reassurance for me because the last thing I would want to do is outcompete others, but maybe that's what we need to do to retain people, so. But if you're pretty confident that it's on par, we're kind of in the middle in terms of our benefits.
We benchmark them every year at insurance renewal.
Okay, thanks, Julie. Then I had more of a math question. We're only increasing overall 4.5%, and yet the min, mid and max are 7.5%, 10% and 12%. Why is it not higher?
Right, well, that's the focus on the pay ranges and the percentage that you're talking about is focused on the salaries. So a lot of the employees are within, their salaries are within the pay ranges. So that's why it's not nearly as drastic of a jump as what you saw for the pay ranges.
If you all wouldn't have provided the $3,000 in July, it would have been a lot more.
I'm sure that does a tremendous help.
Okay, so that leads me to my next question, which is the police department got the overall all-employee 3,000, but previous to that, they also got the initial market adjustment in January 2022. And then we're raising all the boats together with this. And so I just want to make sure I understand how the police department specifically compares, given those two adjustments that are included, with all the boats rising, with those other jurisdictions. If that could be provided as part of an answer to the various questions that you'll receive.
I know Chief ATAC has some specific information on that. And Steve's coworker, Don, the president.
Doctor Long.
Yeah, sorry, Doctor Long, the president of the company, shared that police are just seeing a change at a much faster pace than most other positions.
The way it was explained to me also was, you know, the police, they're state certified, so they can pick up and go almost anywhere once they get their certifications. So it's very important to retain what we have. So once again, we're not just having a revolving door.
Right, so, but if you do that, if you provide that answer in terms of how we compare to other jurisdictions, in theory, we should be equal.
Yeah, this is catching us up. We've been behind.
Okay, I look forward to seeing that information, thank you.
Thank you, Sammy.
One final, really quick question. Julia, are exit interviews a part of normal procedure? And in those exit interviews, I know this is just anecdotal, but are you hearing from employees about they are leaving because they found higher pay elsewhere? To what extent are you hearing that?
It is for sure the strongest in our emergency services departments. They are able to go to other jurisdictions and have a lower rank and less responsibility and make more money.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan, thanks, Julie. Elias, are you raising your hand?
Yeah.
Okay, Elias R.
Sorry to come back to this, just on that point, right? So emergency services, you're talking about firefighters as well as police officers. So, and then this goes back to kind of understanding more. If you could please, I guess this is more of an ask, right? If we can get more information as how that measures out when we're looking at emergency services, when you're looking at folks and looking at these 40, 49, 46, 40, 40 something. So that I understand that better. Because I also, I'm looking at this as, of course, like we get the cross-theboard salary adjustment, but going back to what Mayor Pro Tem mentioned earlier, like 600 versus 3,000, right? And looking at equitable distribution of those resources as well as, you know, being, I'm all for folks being able to work and live in Corboro. And I just want to make sure that as we're moving into the salary adjustment and making sure that our folks are paid well, we're also ensuring that even folks in the custodian level are able to live in Corboro. And I'm more, I'm much more in line with ensuring that the custodian is able to live well in Corboro than just the broad, you know, broad salary adjustment for everyone. I don't know if that makes any sense, but that's.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and so, so one thing I thought, maybe just to make sure we're all on the same page, the raise to the minimum is, that means that after we applied the 2% raise, that there are 49 people, I don't remember the exact number either, that are not at the proposed minimum of these new pay grades. So those are simply, those 42 are simply being brought up to the new minimum. And that's going to be more than a 2% raise for those individuals. And so, and then, you know, the other thing is, is we talk about applying the Orange County Living Wage a lot to our part-time employees, but we also, of course, make sure it applies to all of our permanent employees too. And a lot of times, we don't see that hourly pay for them, we kind of see their salaries. But we, you know, we check against all of our part-time and full-time employees for the OC Living Wage every year too.
And thank you for that, you know, again, I just kind of want to understand this better as we move forward. And again, I'm very much in line with making sure that our folks in Corboro, they're doing amazing work, are paid adequate, adequately, adequately. But I also want to make sure that I understand what I'm voting for.
Thanks, Elias R. Okay, thank you, Julie, Steve, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you all.
So what we have before us tonight, council members, is a recommendation from the manager to approve the implementation of this plan. However, I know we have at least a couple of us who have some additional questions they'd like to ask or have answered by staff. So I guess, question in my mind is, are these questions that you can make sure to get to the manager this week so that he can have answers ready for us before or at our next council meeting with the intention of taking a decision on this matter at our next meeting?
No, you need to move people?
So first, I just want to get a sense of, is that a yes from everybody? That we feel like if you, we can get questions to the manager by some point? By some point next week, I guess, we're talking about next Wednesday or something like that. To manager, does that make sense? Or this Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
That's tomorrow. Okay, so would, maybe Thursday then, is that adequate?
By the end of the week would be fine.
By the end of the week, okay.
You already have my question, so I don't have anything else but that.
Mr. Manager, I guess that, thanks, Barbara, for clarifying that. So I guess really it's Mr. Manager, you've received a few questions here tonight that people have expressed. And there may be a few more on folks' minds that they can put in writing and maybe think a little more clearly about exactly what questions they have and get those to you by the end of the week.
Yep.
And we can plan in that case to have this on the agenda for next week's meeting. Randy?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, does that mean that it can be on next week's agenda as a consent agenda item?
I'm guessing it would not be a consent item, but it would be, you know, an item to take action on. I mean, unless people indicate by the end of this week that they feel like their questions are answered. And in that case, I'm glad for it to be on the consent agenda, I love things on the consent agenda. And it can always be pulled if necessary. So why don't we see what the questions are by the end of the week? And council members will commit to getting those to the manager by the end of the week. And we'll see what kind of, where that gets us. Does that answer your question, Randy?
Thank you, yes.
I guess the appropriate motion at this time, if this is what everyone wants to do, is to defer consideration of this matter until September 20th, which is next Tuesday.
So moved.
Moved by Elias R. and seconded by Barbara, that we defer consideration until next meeting on Tuesday, September 20th. With the understanding, may I add, that council members will get their questions about this item to the manager by the end of this, by Friday of this week. Any further discussion or questions about that or about the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Matter passes unanimously. So we will be ready for this next Tuesday. Steve, thanks again for your presentation and Julie for all the information. It is an exciting opportunity, I think I'll echo some of what I heard here tonight. It's an exciting opportunity for us to make good on what we've been talking about a lot over the past year, especially as we implement, begin implementing the comp plan, which is to make sure that we have adequately prepared and resourced our staff to do the big job we're asking them to do. So this is an important step for us to take, so thank you. Next item, Mr. Manager.
The next item is the 203 South Greensboro Street Project Procedure for After Hours Concrete Work. The purpose of this item is to establish a procedure for managing the concrete work necessary to complete construction of the 203 project and for the council to consider approving an exemption to the town's noise ordinance to accommodate this work. And Ben Schmatteki, our Capital Projects Manager, will introduce the item.
Welcome, Ben.
Good evening. All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ben Schmatteki, Capital Projects Manager with the town. With me is Robert Eagle, Senior Project Manager for Barn Hill Contracting Company. So tonight's agenda item, as the manager explained, we will be reviewing the large-scale concrete operations required for construction of the 203 project in relation to the noise restrictions included in the town code. We have a proposed noise mitigation plan that we will be presenting. And we are requesting that the council consider making an exception for the 203 building for what we're calling large-scale concrete pores. So this is the noise restriction in Chapter 5, Article 2, related to construction activities. So within 300 feet of residentially occupied structures, noise restrictions between the hours of sunset and 7:00 a.m., Monday through Saturday and noon on Sundays. So this next slide shows a 300-foot perimeter around the property line. And I've starred here the residentially occupied structures that we're going to kind of give special attention to. And so what to expect? We're expecting approximately eight after-hours concrete pores for the monolithic floor slabs. So that would involve early morning concrete deliveries and noise from the concrete trucks and pumping trucks, vibrations and the backup alarms on those vehicles. And so there's been a couple of projects fairly recently in town. The IFC, they had a, an exemption was made for that construction project by the town manager. And Shelton Station, a little bit before that, also did some after-hours concrete work. And so here's what we are proposing to kind of mitigate disturbances to the neighboring residents and businesses. And so the intent is to give a week notice from Barn Hill to town staff and then we'll work together notifying neighboring residents and businesses of the upcoming work. And so we have a, we have an email distribution list of the neighborhoods, you know, social media, electronic message boards, door hangers, you know, specifically to those 16 or so close by residents and, you know, any other means that we feel are, would be beneficial. And so following kind of IFC's example, concrete deliveries will begin no earlier than 3:00 a.m. Finished work could take place into the night that same day, but it's not expected to be a nuisance or a noise disturbance. To the extent possible, deliveries will be made to the north side of the building to maintain the furthest distance possible from residential areas. To the extent possible, we'll try and muffle or modify backup alarms to be quieter, more on the minimum side of the OSHA standards. And then, you know, any good faith efforts Barn Hill can do to minimize noise during these operations and accommodate requests by town staff and the community. And then no more than two of these after-hours concrete pores per week and not falling on consecutive nights. So this is the resolution, we have included the mitigation procedure in here. And again, this is for approximately eight of these after-hours large-scale concrete pores. And so the resolution would exempt those from Article 5, Chapter 5, Article 2. Any questions?
Thank you, Ben. Randy, and then Susan.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Ben, I appreciate this. I have questions. When you, when you talk about how many residences will be notified, does that, is, are you giving? Yeah, that's what I need to see. Okay, so, so does. Okay, so, so does, does that, it doesn't look like it includes some of the neighbors who live further west and slightly further south. Are, are we limited to how many?
No, it's, um, we do have, we've, we've got a pretty hefty distribution list of people, word of mouth and, um, from our construction management meeting we, we held back in the spring. It's, it's grown considerably since then, people have requested to be added to the list. Catherine Lazorko, the town's communication director, has been, um, uh, advertising to people that they can get on this list to be notified of, of kind of certain activities. And so we have that. Door hangers are something that we use a lot and so I'm thinking, you know, people that I know would be affected specifically, like people around that 300-foot perimeter, um, they would get door hangers, but we're, we're not going to limit any kind of communication or outreach.
I'm just going to say that, um, the widest possible distribution of door hangers and, and just personal contact to let folks know is really important, especially noise that's going to be late at night. There is nothing there to absorb sound, so the sound will travel. They won't, you know, it's like during the day, there's traffic, there's, you know, there's things that absorb sound and, and kind of there's a cacophony of sound, but late at night, not so much. So, you know, I think folks would really appreciate, you know, um, more care up front. The second question I have is, um, you know, very often when they're doing this work late at night, they need lights. What is the relationship, you know, with, because when they put those daylight lights up for evening work, um, any thought about, you know, the, the light cast and, and concern for, uh, sharing that with residents?
Yeah, I mean, um, so the, kind of the residential zoning district line is on the south side of, so, you know, I think any effort we can make to, to point those lights in the other direction, um, and definitely minimize any use of lights. You know, the Barn Hill has indicated that, you know, all the work is planned to be during the day, except with the exception of these kind of, uh, big concrete pores. So, you know, hopefully no more than eight, eight nights would, would lights be utilized? But we could, we'll definitely take that into consideration.
Right, and, and please let residents know that that's a possibility. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Thanks, Randy. Susan?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I have just a couple of questions. Uh, so first, um, I know that this would be about eight after-hours concrete pores. Could we, would it work if we were to say that those pores would not occur on a, um, a Saturday or Sunday morning before 3:00 a.m.? In other words, could the pores occur just Monday through Friday, beginning at 3:00 a.m.?
You want to?
Yeah. I would say I don't know that I've had any concrete pores that occurred on a Sunday morning.
Right.
And I would be really hard pressed to say that I've even had any that occurred on a Saturday morning. Definitely Monday through Friday. It would benefit us if we at least could consider Saturday if we had to. And, and the reason I say that, if we're ready to pour and we should get rained out on a Friday, everything's scheduled for a Friday morning. Sometimes you have to make exceptions and, and, and make that pour on Saturday. I don't know that I've ever had to make one on a Sunday, though. But, because one, I don't think we could get concrete. I mean, we're somewhat at the mercy of the concrete plant opening up. But Saturday, usually things aren't scheduled for that. It's only if you weren't able to do it during the week. So from that perspective, I, I, I don't think there would be a problem with, with saying we, you know, Sunday is completely off the table and Saturday would only be as a fallback if, if for some reason you couldn't do it on a Thursday or Friday. And, and we have had that, you know, case, we, you know, probably the last large concrete project that I did similar to this was, was one at North Hills and we, 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 we were, you know, somewhat hit the same mercy of, of residential being right nearby. And I don't think it occurred more than once or twice on a Saturday.
That's, uh, that's helpful. I'm glad to hear about Sundays. We can't control the weather and hopefully, uh, the Saturdays will be free as well.
Would be very limited, I think.
Great. One other question. We were all on council during the, the roundabout on North Greensboro, um, the constant drilling, um, and it was really, really hard on nearby residents. And I know that we put a few things in place, um, that didn't fully address the problem, but maybe that helped at the margins. Uh, one thing was providing, um, earplugs and that kind of thing for, uh, neighbors. I don't know to what extent that would help here, but something that would probably help more would be maybe one or two nights out of this eight nights, at least providing an opportunity for one of the families to stay at the Hampton Inn. And we have a partnership with Hampton Inn, hopefully, um, they would be, um, interested in working with us on that. But I'm just thinking, we are living at a time of extraordinary stress, um, people are going through a lot. And should this get, you know, there, everybody's going to have different things going on in their lives. When the pours start at 3:00 a.m. in the morning, that may be the day of a, a major event in their lives. So I was just wondering if that would be even a possibility, that these nights could be offered under, you know, one or two nights for each of the families within the 300 feet of the construction site, um, as sort of a rest, but if need be.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that and it's a good idea.
Thank you, Susan.
Would, um, would, could you look into perhaps a Hampton Inn doing that in, in the spirit of, um, doing a goodwill, uh, gesture for the community? And if that doesn't work, um, may, perhaps we could see if there would be funding available to provide this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Ben.
Next up, I have Elias R.
Yeah, um, so I am so excited for this to get going, so thank y'all for, for, uh, getting the building build, the building built. Um, just, 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 I want to reiterate, um, if at all possible, and I know that Saturdays are kind of just like a fallback in case, but if at all possible, we can avoid Saturday or just a weekend, uh, noise. I just want to reiterate that that's very important for me, that we want to make sure that this building is, it's done, we want to make sure that it's, it's, it's for the community, but also I don't want to give undue harden or, or hardship to folks already. And I don't know about most folks, but I'm not up at three in the morning and if I'm waking up at three in the morning, especially on the weekend, I'm going to be really mad. So, just saying. So if, if at all possible, I know it's a fallback, but if at all possible, let's just avoid the weekend.
Yep, I agree.
Hey, great. Thanks for that, Elias R. We have Sammy.
Just wondering what those red stars are?
So those were properties that fell within the 300-foot perimeter.
How about the, uh, Carr, South Greensboro, those two properties, aren't those?
East thing?
Yeah.
So those are, are rented by Barn Hill.
Oh, okay.
So they're not residentially occupied.
We're probably not going to say anything.
Okay, and then, um, and then wanted to make sure that, um, you communicate with Catherine, uh, in terms of, um, the neighborhoods that have listservs, like I know Maple has one. And Sweet Bay Place, I'm sure has one. Especially those houses that are across the, we talk about traveling sound, like that parking lot has nothing preventing the sound from going to those houses. Just to make sure, you know, we, we take advantage of those listservs and even, um, the old Carboro Mill neighborhood, those two properties that are touched there are vacant. And so just to make sure that touch or, or tap into the listserv up there. Thank you.
I know Kat Lazorko, she'll enjoy the challenge of figuring out how to make this notification happen in a really great way, so, yeah, thanks for that, Sammy. All right, we have a, a resolution before us, um, to approve this plan, um, and a suggestion from council members that we include in that resolution, an amendment that specifies that there will be no pores on Sundays and that Saturdays will, when possible, be used only as a backup for, you know, whatever contingencies. So it sounds like you're both comfortable with that, uh, proposed amendment to the resolution, is that?
Saturdays in, in, in our world is usually, would only be a backup if for some reason, uh, Thursday or Friday pour got canceled, because it, it does present other challenges for a Saturday pour.
You're definitely comfortable with removing Sunday from the table?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a, a motion to approve the resolution with the one change that Sundays would not be, uh, used for four days?
Have my hand up.
Barbara, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and so would weather push you to a Saturday? You know what I mean? Like you would plan for Monday through Friday, you know, whatever. I, I know you'll make every effort for it to be Monday through Friday. So if it, it rains or something, with some type of weather event on a day you plan, would that be something that would push it to a Saturday or would you just wait until the next week?
We would do everything that we could, if possible, to wait till a Monday.
Oh, cool.
But weather could very well impact what we're doing and push us to a, um, a Saturday, so to speak. Uh, there, there are other factors too, there, the, the testing company that they need to be there, there is the concrete finisher or the place or, uh, he may say, hey, if you can't make it on, on, on Saturday, you get bumped till Tuesday or Wednesday of the next week. So there, there's several factors. But I would say that Saturdays would be very rare, um, and, and we have no problem taking Sunday off the table.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll, I'll move it with the suggested amendments.
Seconded by Elias R., is that a second?
Yes.
So the motion by, is by Barbara, seconded by Elias R. to approve the resolution in attachment B with the change that Sundays will not be used and that Saturdays will generally be used only as a backup. Is that a fair summary of your motion? All right, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The matter passes unanimously. All right, off we go. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go have a coffee and watch y'all pour.
We should have some stands erected.
Not at 3:00 a.m.
All right. Mr. Manager, next item.
Next item is a resolution to amend rules of procedure for the town of Carboro Boards and Commissions to allow remote participation. The purpose of this item is for the council to consider an amendment to the current rules of procedure for the town of Carboro Boards and Commissions to allow remote participation by board and commission members at its meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Council. So before you tonight is an amendment to the, uh, Board and Commissions Rules of Procedure. This is a response to the state of emergency that expired in August, which in effect also expired the remote public meeting statutes that went into effect, a response to COVID-19. So what we did was, we'd been working with staff over this last month to come up with what we thought would be a uniform policy for all boards and commissions, with the only exception being, uh, the Board of Adjustment due to quasi judicial evidentiary hearing. And that set forth in the amendment in front of you. The, this policy, the rules and procedures were adopted in 2017 and, and what it currently states is that all board and commission members can participate remotely, but they wouldn't, but they're not entitled to vote and they're not, um, and they would not be counted, uh, for purposes of a quorum. Uh, so what we've done here is, is allowed, uh, all board and commission members, and again, with the exception of the Board of Adjustment, to participate remotely. And in doing so, they would be able to vote and they would be counted towards a quorum. So this is, uh, specifically geared towards the boards and commissions of the town of Carboro. This has nothing, nothing to do right now with council itself. At, if you all decide that wants to be something that's brought forth to you all, that would sort of have to be a, a different discussion. But at this time, um, I'm happy to go and answer any questions and, um, we would just like some feedback for you all of, of how to go and move forward in terms of, um, crafting any additional language or suggestions that you all have.
Thank you, Brady. And before I move on, I see Barbara, then Randy, and then Susan, but before, Barbara, you start, uh, just, uh, to follow up on something Brady said. Brady has also done a lot of work around potential amendments regarding council member, council's ability to hold remote meetings or other kinds of hybrid, perhaps, meetings, including participation in such meetings by the public and so on. But that's not, uh, we're kind of not there with that work yet, but we are here tonight with this particular proposal specifically around advisory boards and commissions. So just so you know that that's out there and that Brady's done a lot of great work around that and maybe coming before us relative, yeah. So just so you know, you don't have to dig into too much into that council business tonight. Tonight, we're really focused on this particular proposal around advisory boards. So let's go to, I think I said Barbara, and then Randy and Susan.
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, and thank you, Brady. I wanted to, to go back to the memo that was sent out by you and, uh, Nick, uh, from August 12th. And, um, I kind of want you to kind of tie that into where we are now, because, you know, as I was discussing with you prior to the meeting, it does look a little bit different. And I know that a lot of folks that serve on our advisory boards would, um, absolutely appreciate the hybrid and the extra accessibility, um, that Zoom and, and hybrids, um, provide. And so the advisement from about a month ago is different here. And I see things in this draft resolution, like when appropriate and to the extent practical, you know, which leaves a lot open. I mean, you know what I mean? When appropriate, to the extent practical. I remember seeing to the extent practical, what was that we were talking about? Wasn't it, uh, the Arts Center on Jones Ferry Road? We kind of nashed that out, to the extent practical. What does that mean, to the extent practical? So, um, if you could just kind of move us from the, that memo about a month ago to now and, um, that when appropriate and to the extent practical are really just kind of standing out, but maybe they need to be in there. You know, you're the lawyer, I'm not, that's not my scope.
To the extent practical, and, and I'm sort of with you, it is vague, but that's to go and, and give staff the ability to be able to have these meetings remotely and that's just from a practical standpoint of technology. So in other words, in our position is, it's fine to go and be, be conducted remotely via, you know, phone call, right? But the person has to be adequately heard and the public needs to go and be able to hear, hear them. Ideally, Zoom would be great, but at this point, after talking with the manager and Wes, you know, you know, Wesley, I, I don't think we're there yet to be able to have, you know, Zoom hybrid at this point, and they may be, be able to speak to that more, but I think they're looking into that. So that's where the extent practical comes into play. And in regards to my memo, that was more geared towards council. And I don't want to get too much in the weeds of that, but our legal position there from a council perspective is, is, is remote participation can be done, but you all would have to have a valid quorum present to be able for that person to participate remotely.
Got it. That makes, that makes it a lot clearer. Thank you. Wait. And when appropriate?
Yeah, could you point me to where, um?
You see, you see where you have, uh, the red, redness? To go above section one, go above now there before, to allow remote participation by board members at its meetings when appropriate. And while you're looking, it, I, I don't know if Mr. White or anybody is, well, he's showing you that. Uh, another legal thing that y'all write, right? The when appropriate.
I guess that's getting towards during, uh, particular times we're able to go and do that.
Okay.
Honestly, that whereas clause came before when we had a little bit more specifics for remote participation for advisory boards and other commissions, they're gearing more towards the, the rules that I drafted up for potential council consideration. And these are just a little bit more general to allow flexibility in that regard.
Okay. And I don't know if this is, I know you mentioned Mr. White and the ability to use Zoom and, or not to use it, you know, for the hybrid or whatever. Is this the time you would want to talk about that or would you not want to talk about that now? You and Wesley? Is that Wesley over there? Where's your hair at? I was looking, I was like, I think that's him.
He buzzed his head.
Handsome, looks nice. So is this a good time for you to talk about your concerns about that and what you might see going forward to be used? Or do you want to do that later?
Just briefly, it's really about technology. This point, for example, in this room, as I understand it, to put Zoom in this room to do a hybrid meeting, there'd be a lot of feedback from these microphones. So we're trying to figure out those kind of technical things of how do we do that from a technical standpoint? And then with the advisory boards themselves, we're trying to figure out which ones want to be hybrid and where would that happen? To make sure that technology is in place to allow those to happen where those boards might want to meet. It's really about the technology at this point more than anything else. And then secondly, I think it's about the preference of the advisory boards and commissions who want to meet hybrid and what that might look like. For example, if we're gonna allow call in, is that by phone? Or what are the technologies would be to make that happen?
Okay, so then, yeah, so it is a lot that has worked out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Randy, you're next, and then Susan.
Yeah. I just want to, this is just a point of clarification, Brady. In regard to, on page 80, it talks about the role of the Chair of an Advisory Board. And I'm wondering, so just procedurally, could, could a Chair call for a full remote meeting? So let's just say, and I'm just throwing this out as a what if, right? So what if there's an impending snowstorm? And, and, you know, the Chair wants to get ahead of, you know, last minute cancellation or something and calls for the meeting to be remote. Is, first of all, is that something that the Chair can do? And I'm sure that, you know, the Chair would be in touch with the members in that, you know, to inform that decision maker. But, and two, you know, is there, what kinds of things, if that's possible, need to be in place for that procedure to happen? Because it involves the technology.
Correct.
So I'm just trying to look at, you know, how that could.
Yeah. I'll put it this way. I don't think the intent of the open meeting statutes want any sort of boards to do strictly remote participation until we get some more guidance from the legislature, which it's speculative, but I'm hopeful that will come in the next, let's say, year. Because every municipality that wants to have any sort of a hybrid model is going to be dealing with this to some degree. With that being said, if they have one meeting, I mean, I don't want to take a legal position one way or the other, but I don't think that's going to go, if there's a snowstorm involved, right? But I think the intent of the open meetings laws is for it to be done in person to some degree. And I'll leave it at that. But it's going to be hard to craft rules that's going to go and fit every specific situation. Right? So I guess we could explore to see if a provision in there under, you know, extreme circumstances. But I would be hesitant to go and make a final call on that tonight without looking into it further.
Right.
As it pertains to advisory boards and that type of thing.
Yeah, exactly. So, so my question is, you know, were there to be some flexibility to allow for that in whatever extreme situation could be or the need, let's just say the need? Is that, would that be part of the responsibility of the Chair? Because that's the other part.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, sorry, I didn't go follow up on that, yeah.
Is that something, you know, which is, it's not, I mean, it would need an asterisk more or less, but is that something that we would want to see in here now ahead of, so that we don't forget?
Yeah, that's up to you guys, right? And that's kind of where we needed a little bit of feedback of how much more, maybe less, that we want than we currently have in front of you.
Right, so that would be my suggestion, especially because, you know, you never know what you never know.
I mean, I suspect the reality is, just given the way that the advisory boards typically operate, is it's really going to be the staff and the Chair who are figuring out, like, is it appropriate to do this in this situation or whatever? But take that point as well taken, Randy, thank you. I have Susan next, and then Sammy.
Thank you, Brady. I have just three really quick questions. The first is, just kind of following up on this role of the Chair and the staff. So I would assume if it's a hybrid meeting, the Chair kind of needs to be there in person, right? It would be hard to run a meeting remotely with other members in person. So I would think that that would almost be a requirement for the meeting, but I don't know.
It's up to you guys, yeah.
Second is, some of us serve on advisory boards, they're sort of intergovernmental advisory boards. So an example is, I have the pleasure of working with Anita on an intergovernmental works, work group. And how will this work with, do all of the other, the other two townships, the county? How it work in terms of everybody's just going to need to get together and figure out what that intergovernmental group is going to do for policy?
How you all go and meet in that sort of dynamic? And whether these rules of procedure actually go and apply to that type of county type boards? Because in this policy, to my understanding, and again, it was a little bit unclear of how it was written, which I actually have an amendment on there that specifies that it applies to the Board of Adjustment, the actual whole policy. So I'm not sure if that even applies to the board that you're talking about.
Okay.
It'd be a little different, Susan, in that those are not town advisory boards, right? Those are inter, multi-jurisdictional.
Multi-jurisdictional.
Boards. So I'm guessing that this would not, this doesn't apply to those entities.
That would be my, that would be my assumption too, yeah.
Final question, we all serve as council liaisons to advisory boards. So I assume we will, if it's a hybrid meeting, we would just be making that choice. We either are in person or virtual, but.
Since it's not a, you know, regular special or emergency meeting that you all call, then you guys would fall under Board and Commission members for this purpose.
Thank you, Brady.
Next up is Sammy, and then I'll go to Barbara.
Thanks, Brady. I find the draft language pretty, pretty good in that it's very clearly stating that some or all Board and Commission members shall be allowed to participate remotely. In terms of Randy's question, I personally like how open it is. I don't think we need to specify. And to your point, Susan, in terms of requiring a Chair to be there, oftentimes we need carrots for Chairs to even volunteer to be Chairs. And so I think this might, you know, might be counterproductive to require them to be the only ones. So I'm very happy with the language in terms of, and I look forward to the work that you're doing in terms of how we, as a council, might be able to have hybrid and have the public participate because I think that's a big thing we've been hearing from members of the public in the next meeting.
Thanks, Sammy. Barbara?
So we're pretty much focused on this resolution. And so, I mean, I'm okay with the language as well. And so if we pass this resolution, which I'm assuming we will, I don't know if council members will want, you know, a few changes here and there, I'm not sure. So then going forth about how the advisory boards will meet until we decide about how, what the hybrid is actually going to be, what method, or get the technology in line. I don't know if that's you or Mr. White. But, but my point is, I would assume, I guess, the advisory boards would meet in person until it has been decided about the hybrid and the getting the technology, you know, to the point where it's working.
Yeah, I can't speak to the technology standpoint, but I think Wesley's been on it and the manager, which is probably why this is being in front of you tonight. And to answer your second question regarding if this isn't adopted tonight, then my recommendation is it should be in person, but we need to get this adopted as soon as we can.
Oh, I wouldn't think it wouldn't be adopted tonight. I would think it would be. But I was just asking, you know, in the interim, while the technology is getting aligned, you and Wesley. Is that Wesley over there? You know, that the advisory boards and commissions would meet in person until everything can get ironed out. That's what I was getting at. So yes, the answer to that is yes.
That's a logistical question that I don't.
You don't, it's not for you.
That might be missed for the manager, yeah. So Barbara, maybe can I try to restate your question a little bit?
I thought it was pretty clear.
I thought so too, but I'm not sure Richard has a look on his vacay card, he might not be sure.
Everybody's looking real perplexed.
So if we adopt, if we adopt this change tonight, as Barbara said, but you're saying that there might still be some technical issues to iron out. Until those are ironed out for any given advisory board, that board would really need to be meeting in person.
I think the hybrid piece only allows the public participation. They can still meet remotely, it's just if they want folks to call in, for example, or if there's a public comment section, for example, to advisory board meeting. That's the hybrid piece. They could still meet remotely. There could be some combination of remote meeting and in person or all remote, whatever they choose.
But they would have to be able to accommodate public participation.
Oh, really?
In person, like members of the public who came to Town Hall.
That's the piece.
Would have to be able to access the meeting from Town Hall.
The interactive piece, yes, between those who are remote, that's the hybrid piece of that we have to.
Okay.
And not the meeting itself.
Exactly, right. I mean, we have Zoom now and Teams and Microsoft Team and all that, so they can.
Presumably, since all of these meetings are open, public meetings, that has to be figured out in order to allow public participation, I mean.
Right, and they would do, like, for example, through Zoom, they could still view it through Zoom. They could log on to Zoom and still see the meeting. It's just the participation piece. If you wanted them to interact with the meeting, that's the hybrid piece we have to figure.
Okay. Sammy?
I would like to go ahead and move this resolution.
Right, it's been moved by Sammy and seconded by Susan. That we adopt the resolution in attachment B, I believe. Thank you, Sammy, Susan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes unanimously.
Thank you, Brady, for your work on this.
Absolutely, thank you all.
Thanks very much. We'll see how it, see how it works out in these first few months or so. Maybe it'll need some tweaking or something, but appreciate all the work you've put into this.
Thank Nick.
Sure.
All right. I believe, Mr. Manager, our next item is appointments to the Community Safety Task Force, is that right?
That's it, yes.
So y'all, as you know, we have four applications that were included in our agenda packet or two available seats on the Community Safety Task Force. And I want to acknowledge, I believe Mr. Omar is in the audience today. Is that you, Mr. Omar? Thank you so much for sitting through this whole meeting with us today. So I think I shared with y'all, most of you, I think, today that Mr. Omar has indicated an interest both in the Affordable Housing Advisory Commission as well as in the Community Safety Task Force. And I think Wesley spoke with Mr. Omar today to kind of confirm what your preference might be. And if I understand correctly, and I want to speak for you and I'll certainly let you answer, but you're willing to do either one, but your preference is still for the affordable housing. Okay, is that a fair summary?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to share that, make sure council members knew that going into it. We do have at least one vacancy, I'm pretty sure, on the Affordable Housing Advisory Commission. And Wesley will be bringing that before the council in somewhat short order. Wesley and I will be meeting pretty soon to talk about all of the advisory boards and kind of where we are with vacancies and appointments. So that's in the works, including the Affordable Housing Commission.
We have some others that's coming up in the, during the Fall Session.
Right. So I just wanted to share that note with folks. And as usual, we will vote by ballot. And the clerk will distribute the ballots. Again, since there are two positions to be appointed, you must vote for two nominees.
Can I say something before we vote or my hand's going to fall off?
Yes, please, Barbara.
Thank you, Mayor. And so I just wanted to get in a comment before, you know, and y'all will probably go ahead and mark your ballots, but that's okay. I think about how the Community Safety Task Force was birthed a couple of years ago. The murder of a black man named George Floyd in the streets of Minneapolis was part of this rallying cry for like the world to reimagine community and public safety. And so here we are, we've created our Community Safety Task Force. And so when I look, I want to hear from people who have some lived experience, you know, and also want to hear from some other folks. So it does, it does matter who goes on this very important and new task force. You know, you need some lived experience, you also need, you know, some other folks that have been identified. But remembering the core mission and the reason why we even have this Community Safety Task Force is very, very important. And it's about more than just checking the box because Billy is this or Jane is that. It's who can lend the voice and the experience to the task force.
Well put, Barbara, thank you. Any other discussion before we fill out our ballots? All right. And be sure to write your name at the bottom so that it can be recorded in the minutes.
I signed it.
Over to Wesley. Wesley has the fun job of counting up our votes and will let us know who the top two vote getters were. Mr. Omar, I'm very impressed and grateful for you being here all night tonight. So thank you again for sitting with us. It bodes well for your future participation on our advisory boards.
Susan has incredible patience.
If anyone should know. I hear you have a, there's a familiar face up here for you.
Oh, yeah, oh, familiar face? Oh, yeah, it's a teacher mine. And then Ms. Musi, I live around the town too.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping up to serve on our advisory board.
Are we ready, Wesley? Go for it.
So we have Mr. Chowdhury and Mr. Blaisdell.
Mr. Blaisdell, great. All right. So we will make these appointments by motion and vote in the majority of the council, as usual. Is there a motion to approve Wameek Chowdhury and Ben Blaisdell as the appointments to this, to the Community Safety Task Force?
They're moved.
And seconded, so moved by Eli Azar, seconded by Susan, that we appoint Wameek and Ben to the task force. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. And Musa and I hope that you'll know, of course, that your application, because we already have it, it will be included among the applications that we consider with the Affordable Housing, Affordable Housing Commission. So I hope to see you very soon again. Thanks so much. Randy, yeah?
I have a quick question regarding the Community Safety Task Force. It is a task force. And I can't recall, is there a date certain that it sunset? And if so, what is that?
Yes, they have, and we updated, the council recently updated this to account for kind of the slow startup time for getting the council, the task force going. But basically 12 months. And then if the task force itself determines they need a little more time, they can determine, they can take another, another six months at their discretion. So but the, so the, it's total of potentially 18 months. Thanks for the question. Thanks for the question. All right. Matters by council members, don't have anything under there. I think, actually, Barbara did share an email with everyone, if you would all be, be sure to get back to Barbara, if you haven't already, about the resolution that she's interested in introducing at an upcoming meeting. There are a couple other ones coming up that you all have seen emails about, including one regarding the NAACP's local branch, NAACP 75th Anniversary Celebration, so that'll be coming down the pike as I continue discussing that with their representatives. But other than that, the only thing we have left on the agenda is a closed session.
They have.
Randy?
Yeah, I, I will just be getting up with council members this week to chat with you all ahead of the consideration of the EV rodeo event for, at the town common in October.
Thanks for reminding us about that.
Yeah.
Is there a, yes, Barbara?
Yeah, so I just want to say a little bit more about the resolution that I, that I shared with, with everyone, with all of my colleagues. It was shared with me by Orange County Commissioner Chair Renee Price, and it is a resolution to support Operation Green Light for veterans. And what it does is it, it's a resolution that shines a light on the plight of veterans across the country who are having a hard time connecting with benefits after serving their country. I, my brother-in-law is actually having this difficulty right now, and his wife literally has to jump through hoops of fire to, to get the benefits that he deserves, and he is 100% disabled from service in the Army. And so I really wanted to get this resolution passed by our council, I think it's timely, and I think it involves displaying a green light in the window of your business or residence from November the 7th of this year through Veterans Day, November 11th. So it's about the folks that have served and their ability to access adequate benefit.
Thanks, Barbara. And I think you mentioned in your email to all of us that you'll be doing some tweaks to make it sort of Carver-specific. Great.
I, I would.
Thank you.
I just add, Barbara, if, whether or not you want to ask town to, to shine the green lights on the, on the front of the town hall building, as we've done in the past.
That might be in the resolution, but, yeah. Thanks, Randy. Okay, is there a motion to go into closed session for, to discuss a matter? I think it's a personnel matter, is that the right category that we're under here?
Move.
I saw Elias R.'s hand up, so moved by Randy, seconded by Elias R., that we go into closed session, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes unanimously. So we'll go off the air.